Here.
Ms. Gregory?
Here.
Ms. Matts, Mr. Horn?
Here.
Mr. Dorman.
All right, first thing will be the discussion of the Board of Adjustments quorum ordinance as well as the PB and BOA terms. Manager.
Yes, as was reported in a previous report, we've looked at the terms of both those boards and we have some suggestions on how those should be allocated and when those will show, shall end. But at the same time, would suggest the council consider making some changes. Currently, the ordinance requires four members of the Board of Adjustments to be present to take a vote. And so we have struggled this year to get a quorum and I believe at least three months meetings. And that's obviously very frustrating to the applicants for variances. So as I was researching it, well initially I thought it was in the charter, which obviously that's been very difficult to change. When I realized it wasn't, I, I, I thought, well, let's suggest that we modify it down to three. Three is the normal quorums for a board of five. And the more I considered it, I didn't realize that perhaps when they wrote that ordinance, there was a reason why they put the threshold at four. Because you're making an exception to the rule and they want at least four of the five members to vote if in fact you were going to make an exception. So I can't say that I a hundred percent recommend you change it, but you have to balance getting a quorum and whether or not you wish to affect how easy or how difficult it is for that board to approve an exception to our ordinances. Does that make sense, I hope?
Yeah.
Initially, I was way on the side of making it easier so I can get a quorum, so we can conduct business. But that may not be the most important factor to consider. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions. We, we have in the packet, and I can go over the membership of, because the, the planning board serves three-year terms and the Board of Adjustment serves five-year terms. And we're going to suggest you stagger them, you know, two and one-year terms on planning board and three and two-year terms on the Board of Adjustments. But it's, we, we, they were all appointed at the same time when we reconstituted both boards. So I've got it laid out and I guess at the next meeting pass a resolution that solidifies who's serving what term if you're agreeable to, to fixing it that way.
All right, yeah, I think it's a good idea to have them staggered like that.
Any questions on either the staggering, the membership, or the change, potential change in the makeup of the Board of Adjustments?
How long would you say on average it takes a resident to get a variance heard because of the quorum issue?
Well, we can meet all the requirements right now for, for a variance to be heard in July, for example. They would have until the first Friday of June to get us the application so we can get all the paperwork put together and the mailing out to everyone that lives within 300 feet of that address and give them time to respond. Because we've missed, I think, three of the last six meetings because of the lack of quorum, the average is probably closer to 60 days, not 30 days. Now whether that's excessive, that's, I guess, in the eye of the beholder, that's still not too bad, but folks are frustrated if they have to come a second month in a row. Or, for example, the June meeting, we already know we can't get a quorum and we're trying to reschedule a second date in June, but to get three of the five planning board and four of the five Board of Adjustments at a date that wasn't predetermined on their calendar and in the summer can be challenging as well. So did I answer your question, counselor?
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand the point about making it a little more difficult to make an exception to the rules, but generally speaking, as I think about it now, I'd be supportive of the quorum change to three to ensure that we can conduct business in a timely manner for our residents. I know it's, it's even hard to, to fill those positions at times, so.
Okay.
And I just had a question for Renee, is, is that normal with other, like, communities or areas that, with Board of Adjustments or planning boards with the number for the quorum?
I haven't looked at there any other ordinances in any other villages, but I did talk with Jeff, I don't think that's a normal, normal thing in other cities.
I can't speak to other communities in Ohio, but in other states, it was, there were always five-member boards with three of the five.
Three of the five, okay.
No, it's a good question, I, I wish I had more experience in, in the Buckeye State, but I can't speak to that.
I was looking for the, the literature and information in our packet, but I don't see it anywhere, so maybe we can...
Be, okay, you, you don't have the breakdown on the...
No.
No, no, we don't have it, so.
I apologize, it's in mine, I thought was in yours as well.
That's okay.
I will, I'll get you emailed copies of the breakdown and the copy of the report where I lay out the pros and cons. We'll have a, would it be a resolution or an ordinance? It'd be an ordinance, yes. How about we go ahead and draft an ordinance for the regular meeting for you to consider if you choose, and of course, the counselors who aren't here, that would be on the first reading, so it would be a couple of months in the change anyway.
Okay.
Would that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to read over that.
Sure, 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 it's not, yeah, it's something we should take our time to make sure you're comfortable with that change.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with the change because I know when I was on the Board of Adjustments, it was really challenging and a lot of times it was, you know, a lot of times it was stuff that the homeowners were just waiting for a long time for and, you know, the homeowners pay for those, for the variance requests and...
Right.
Are we, we also have an issue, I think, getting people to volunteer, right? Correct?
Some, yeah.
Okay.
But both, both the planning board and the Board of Adjustments currently are filled to the number that is of the open seats, correct?
Yes, I think they will, will have gone like 60 days with having both of them filled without another opening.
Okay, good, good, cool.
But it'd be nice to have them, you know, six months, a year, actually have some experience on both boards as they're making those decisions. And oftentimes, when a resident comes in to apply for a variance, they weren't aware that was required, so they've already ordered the shed, or they've already got the fence company coming in, or they've got, you know, and then they have to juggle that. You may recall, we've actually done some where they already had it delivered and they didn't know, so they understand that if they don't get the variance granted, it has to be moved. And they accept the risk because they already had it in there, so that exacerbates that extra 30 days if in fact they can't meet.
Yep.
Got it. Thank you.
Great, all right.
Next is the Hasket Road traffic study.
Okay, you have a copy of the proposed traffic study, right?
Yep.
Okay, good. Please take a, a look at that draft. I, I think I got everything covered, but if, if you see anything we're missing, we can adjust it. I expect it to be a topic of discussion at the WMUT meeting on Thursday. And I guess the next step will be to wait and see if either the township and or the school are willing to help contribute to the cost of the study. Any questions about it?
Nope.
I haven't had a chance yet to totally go through it, so if I have any questions before Thursday, I'll send them, send them to you.
Give me a call, shoot me an email, you think we missed something. I talked to a couple of engineers putting it together, I think we covered it pretty well. Again, my, it's only a guesstimate of what it might cost, which is another reason I think it's good to get multiple proposals to get a true sense of what a good engineering firm is going to charge if we in fact proceed in getting the study completed. All right?
Okay. Next is the consideration of the re-establishing of the park board.
Um, yeah, that's, I, I guess, I don't know if there's questions or comments, or Renee, what, what would be the process of, of we reconstituting a, a, a legal park board? And then the other option I think that was discussed was the potential of forming a council committee that would work with a couple of citizen volunteers as an advisory board on the parks. But I don't have any experience in forming a park board here, so.
Well, I know the park board is in our charter and in our, our ordinances.
Right.
As far as how to form it, how many members there are, that sort of thing. I think the last time we had talked about funding for it.
Right.
I'm not sure how that was done previously, so that was something that council wanted to look into.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm very supportive of it, but I think what we need to do first is, and this is my, my opinion, see what we can be able to afford to put into the park board budget with our finances, when we have our finance committee and the meetings with all the...
Department heads.
Department heads within the village and see what we can come up with and then, you know, decide from there. I know there's some interest with some folks that I've talked to that were on it before, so that was good. And if I'm not mistaken, I think there were two council members that were on the park board as well as maybe advisory members or what, what have you, because I was on it one time when, when it was established, so. But yeah, I think, I, my opinion, I think that would be the best way forward is to see what we can afford budget-wise and then decide from there to re-establish it at the beginning of next calendar year, January of 2025, something like that.
Yep, that sounds good.
Any other questions or comments on the park board?
All right, so next is the second tax budget resolution.
If my memory is correct, and that's, that's a dangerous, and Renee, I don't know if you recall this, does this require both an ordinance and a resolution for this particular tax? Because I thought we passed an ordinance.
We did, this is the second part of that.
And that's a resolution that's similar in language, but you have to have both, right?
Yes, you have to have both.
All right, that's, that's why...
It's one we pass every year, so.
All right, I, I knew it was the same routine every year, but I wasn't sure how that, the mechanics necessarily. So this is exactly the same type of act you're passing, one was in the form of an ordinance and it will require the second reading, but this is a resolution that will also be in the agenda for the next council regular meeting.
Yep, and this is for the county, this is reading it into?
Correct.
Right.
This is that alternative use, the way the paperwork, I, my understanding is it makes Jill's responsibilities a little easier, so, and, and works, so.
Yep, and we are not putting any more taxes on anyone, this is not a, a tax thing?
No.
This is purely like county declaring our intentions on how we're going to.
This is, this is functional, not fiscal. It's the function of how we deal with it, not the amount.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
So next is the fire department, fire company, new truck purchase.
Chief, do you want me to talk on the first part and you'll get to the new truck?
Sure.
That work? This, this stems from the most recent audit and there were some questions that the auditors raised about the relationship between the village and the fire department. One of them was a fiscal issue that had to do with withholding from a retirement $10 fund, I think that's been resolved. But there was a, a recommendation that the original contract, I believe dated back to the 30s maybe, and was not very detailed or specific, and they suggested before the next audit that the village reestablish a contractual relationship with the fire company? Is that, am I, okay, correct me if I'm describing this wrong, chief?
The contract I found was dated 1960.
Sixty, I'm sorry, don't want to make it older than it was, but they, they felt it needed to be updated and so with the fire department's agreement, perhaps have the law director draft a, a new agreement with, with the fire company for their consideration and, and the village's consideration? And hopefully that would make the next audit perhaps a little less challenging for our law, or our finance director.
So we're really looking to clean things up with the contract between the fire department, which is, which is...
It's both a department and an independent fire company.
Okay, because the fire department is part of the village and the village supports the funding for that, whereas the fire company is part of Union Township and those funds come through Union Township entities, correct?
Right, right.
So they're looking for that contract between the two of you to be updated?
Right.
Okay.
I don't believe there's any significant change in the relationship, it's just bringing it up to date with a more current document that's more specific, is how, the way I understood it from the auditors.
Okay.
So just want to make that aware, if we have that ready by the next council meeting, we'll have it on the agenda, depending on, I guess, chief, if you want your department to look at it first before we bring it up, it may be a couple of months. But at some point in the future, we'll hopefully have a document that the department agrees to, company agrees to, and then we'll formalize it with the village.
And chief, I don't remember, correct me if I'm wrong, the fire department, a certain number of volunteer firefighters are funded through that entity and then another amount is funded through the township, is that how it works, no?
We're one in the same membership.
Okay.
So, the village pays for certain items and it's been that way, doesn't mean it has to be that way.
Okay.
But as per the contract, you provide the building.
Heat.
Electric, water, things like that.
Okay.
So, but three of the trucks out there are department trucks and the rest of it's company trucks.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, so, brings us to the, the request to buy a new truck. I know during the budget process, I'd mentioned it to the mayor, we would like to buy a new fire engine.
Both of our current frontline engines were built in 1998, they don't look that old, but they are, they're 26 years old. NFBA reg 1901 recommends that all frontline apparatus is less than 10 years old. And then reserve engines are less than 20 years old. So both of these are, should be reserve engines. In 19, or in 2018, the company refurbished our engine to extend its life, so it's 20 years old, we were hoping to get another 10 to 20 years out of it. We went, we sent it to Pierce, cost us $325,000 and they went through the pump, the engine, updated compartments, all the lighting, put compressed air foam system on it, light tower, all for that $325,000. So the company's planning to replace their engine in the early 30s, so probably another five years, we'll start looking at it. That total expense was paid by the fire company and we proposed refurbishing the city engine to extend its life and council declined, said they didn't want to invest that money. So, we kind of looked at it, at now, it'd be over a half million dollars to refurbish it, it still wouldn't meet NFBA 1901 requirements and it wouldn't come with a full warranty like a new truck does. So that's why we're recommending a new truck. The compound that, engine 72 didn't pass pump test last year, wouldn't pass drafting test, it still pumps fine, but you just can't draft with it. Other note is the half percent income tax levy was passed in order to fund the replacement of the 1975 Suffolk's engine. And we replaced it with a 1998 Pierce, it's out there now. We did that in 23 years and it's now time to replace the 1998 Pierce. And problem is lead times, our manufacturers are telling us, it worked from two to six years to get a new engine. So, looking two years in the future, we need to get it done now. We tried, we created a truck committee eight months ago and met with three different apparatus manufacturers and talked to a couple others. And we gave them our requirements, we want to increase the water tank capacity from the current 1,000 gallons to a maximum. This allows us to be more aggressive in our firefighting tactics. It's, the tactic is called booster backup. The latter, ladder 71 will still be our first out apparatus in the village, the latter has a 500 gallon tank, which with one hose line, that lasts about three minutes. And in a fully involved structure or a working fire, you'd want at least two lines down, so that cuts it in half. The engine is always second out and our current capacity of 1,000 gallons allows us to flow at the same hose for an additional five minutes, so that gives you about eight minutes, four if you have two running. So we want more water on the engine to provide more firefighting time on tank water and time to hook to hydrant, that takes time. The proposed engine that we're recommending is a 2,500 gallon engine. It allows us to flow single hose line for up to 15 minutes in comparison. This is a significant upgrade with so many capabilities, one of which provides time for other fire department equipment to arrive on scene and provide water while still giving us the needed ability to have water readily available during that time. Our tactics enable our abilities. This apparatus, having 2,500 gallons of water onboard, works very well with our booster backup fighting tactic. Another request is for a low hose bed, the goal is to prevent unneeded steps up and down that can lead to knee, leg, and back injuries. This low hose bed would give us the ability to reach the hose from a standing position instead of climbing up on the truck. Committee met with Spencer Fire Trucks, E1, and Pierce, we've reached out to Suffolk for a quote and they replied, no bid. They have an unknown lead time and were not considered. All three manufacturers, they responded, estimated design drawings with the associated costs. The committee then made a recommendation to the members of the fire company for final approval. The members voted to recommend purchasing from E1, should I have drawings if you'd like to see them?
What's the, is this the, did we have a truck?
This is the final version, that shows the top nut and all.
Okay.
And we want to go with a side mount?
Because I couldn't find it.
Because it'll be a little cheaper, a little bit smaller truck. Now I've got the drawings for the other trucks here too, if you want to look at them. What we considered the selection criteria was capabilities, overall cost, lead time, safety features, both hose bed, and basic functional fire apparatus. This apparatus that the department selected is a very basic functional truck without all the, without extra bells and whistles, if you can believe that. But it is, we felt that it was very important to meet NFBA requirements and be functional throughout the 20 to 30-year life expected. The new apparatus offers many capabilities that our current equipment does not, makes it easier, more streamlined when operating at an incident, and in turn it decreases the time it takes for firefighters to accomplish tasks, ultimately leading to a better service provided to our citizens, which is our common goal and the most important task. The cost, each of the three apparatus considered were more than a million dollars each. Price tag continues to increase until we get under contract, a lot of the manufacturers are telling us that they expect a 3% to 5% increase in June. Spencer Fire Trucks was not able to fulfill all of our requests, including tank capacity, which is critical on the fire scene. Committee received Spencer's bid at $1,030,000 in approximately two-year build time. Pierce was able to meet most of our requests, but not all. The committee received Pierce's bid at 1.3 million in approximately four to four and a half year build time. E1 was able to meet all of our requests and very easy to work with. Once the design was received, the committee made some tweaks and we sent it back, like I say, that we're going from the top mount to the side mount to get it a little bit shorter. And they also came back with just, just over a million dollar bid, $1,030,000? $1,065,000, sorry, but the $50,000... But the fifty, fifty thousand dollar discount if you pay it in full. Which I assume we would do, make a down payment and then take out a loan to pay the entire cost of the truck. All the, E-one, all the warranty work is completed by certified technicians. If it's minor or moderate issue, but the truck operates, they will send a technician to our station to fix it here. If it's a major issue, the truck will be sent to a facility in Cincinnati. And the other thing we liked about the E-one is it's a tandem axle, which will reduce wear and tear on the streets due to the extra weight. Twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred gallons is a lot of water.
What's the warranty period for that E-one fire truck?
I should have introduced Lieutenant Manning and Trustee Matt Eschman.
I don't remember.
Is it normally a five-year, ten-year? I don't know what it is for fire trucks.
It really just depends, I think the motor and the chassis have their individual warranties. I would say between three to five years is pretty close.
It's not going to be beyond five years.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But then I've got a list of safety features. NFBA nineteen oh-one was updated this year. And so this truck will meet the latest edition of NFB nineteen oh-one. So that's the other thing that's great about it. So, we would like to get-
What's the lead time for this one? Did you say it was two years as well?
Two years.
For the E-one?
Yeah.
It's actually twenty-nine months, July.
So, we'd like to get the ball rolling and see what council thinks about this and how we go about procuring the truck.
Six years ago, we did purchase some fire equipment. I don't know what the type of truck it was, but... I want to say a ladder truck, but I'm probably wrong, but...
That was, yeah. That was used, we bought that out of Flower Mountain, Texas.
Yep.
No, I was just going to ask which truck that was. Yeah, it's a ladder truck. Oh, so he was right, alright.
It was a guess.
And it's... It's a, blank, twenty- Two thousand eight, sorry. Two thousand eight, which for our size of village, it doesn't make sense to buy a brand-new one. We used to say a ladder was one point two million. Now it's over one point six, one point seven million. But Flower Mountain's able to replace their engines every ten years.
So, have you looked into maybe, I mean, because those are big numbers to try to consume. I mean, you're talking, if we did a loan like we did for the ladder truck, that was ten years and you're talking over a hun- a hundred thousand a year just for that truck. And, you know, at the end of the ten years, then we've got to put more money into it again, right? I mean... Is there any way that there's other trucks that are, like, somebody else is getting something new and their truck would be, you know, suitable for what we would need it for?
Yeah. We have, we've looked into some used trucks. They had one... What was that? Where's it at?
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania. It was a three-year-old truck and they wanted a million dollars for it.
Wow.
And it met all of our needs. And we would lose the warranty and we didn't see any benefit in that.
Yeah, my thought process was that if we get anything that closer to your symbols of the capabilities that we need, I think for more, I'd add more. And with the way inflation and everything else, I think that's just the current climate and reality of the living.
I think that truck from Pennsylvania, they realized that they had something that was immediate, they could deliver. And they were trying to get more money out of it and they got it too than, you know, what they originally paid for.
Man, yeah, well, yeah, like you said, if there's a three-year lead time and they had something right then.
Right.
Yep.
Are there any, if I know, are there any grants available for this kind of purchase or low-interest, no-interest loans?
Yeah. I know the grants are very competitive. They don't pass out too many. We've tried for years to get grants for the radios, which are smaller dollar value, still a lot of money. But we weren't successful with those either. But I don't know about low-interest grant.
Yeah. I've never, never found a fund or a pot of money for fire trucks of any substance. There's far more demand than there is supply.
Right.
And what are the current financing options for something like this?
Fire trucks, fire trucks are a class by themselves. That's a unique, whether you're trying to lease it. I would say every place I've worked, the council wants them to try to find a used truck and there's no decent used trucks out there. Departments tend to keep them until they drop because they're so expensive. They maintain them well. And when they get rid of them, it's because they're beyond their life expectancy and only even smaller, poorer volunteer departments are willing to try to purchase them and they still get good money for them. So, that's just one of those, it's, it's, it's a difficult challenge to find used equipment that's, makes sense to buy it used as opposed to paying a little bit more and getting a new one.
Yep.
So, we would have it, like, it's gonna, and I apologize if I, like, I'm just, my brain's got a lot of information right now. So it would, we'd finance it like for ten years and then it would have to be rebuilt again?
In theory.
Like that, in theory, right? So, is there a way that we can make a fund for that? So that we put money into it, like?
There is a capital.
There's a capital fund, I'm sure.
I'm not real sure how much is in it right now.
Establishing funds, not the issue, it's putting the money in it every year.
Correct, right.
Yeah, I, you know- Hundred and seventy-four thousand after what's already been appropriated for capital for this year. So the ending balance effectively would be a hundred and seventy-four thousand.
Okay. That's what we have in the bank right now for fire capital.
Right, minus what we've already said we're going to spend for, or what we've already spent for radios or the SPCA.
Right.
Those things that are budgeted and appropriated already.
Well, as council, we're always going to ask, you know, if there's a used option because that million-dollar price tag is a, a big one to swallow. But, you know, seeing as you guys have done your homework, I don't know, you know, where we'd go from here. Probably have to defer to Manager Sheridan to look into it.
I would suggest it's going to take some hard conversations by the finance committee.
Yep.
Not this year, but planning for the next several years and anticipation. It's not a question of if you get a new truck, it's when.
Yeah.
And when you can afford it, and how long they can continue to get by with what they've got.
How does the purchase process work since it's two-plus years? What, I mean, how much of that is, like, when we pass the resolution to buy it? How much of that is then and how much of that is when it's delivered?
You're asking how much of a down payment they require?
Pretty much, I mean, you know.
Yeah, that, that differs. What, what company are you looking to buy it from?
E-one.
So, I do, we do know that... If you pay it full bid, we would give fifty thousand dollar cost.
But that was on delivery.
But as in for, you know... When we assign papers to buy the truck.
Okay, so if you could find out that information to know how much they have to have upfront as opposed to how much is paid on delivery and that kind of stuff would be helpful for the budgeting process.
Yeah, because I think we need to have all this information so that the finance committee's going to be forming here in August timeframe. So we've only got a couple months. We get all this information in front of us. That way we can really, you know, dig into it to see how we can budget for this and how we can plan for it. Because I would say we, we've got to get this ordered by the end of the year to get things moving since we got a two-year lead time, two-year plus lead time.
Council have any additional questions? Nope. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, next is the proposed legislation, legislation for vacant building registration.
About the school tennis court.
Uh, we'll just talk about that on Thursday.
You got it. This is the legislation that council has viewed before. I plan to put it on the agenda for the next regular council meeting. Just to refresh your memory, my recommendation is based on this being the next step in our code enforcement efforts. This would be another tool to assist with code enforcement and it would help the village be much more aware of vacant properties before they become significant issues. It's, it's primarily an information gathering tool to know who owns what building. Is it for sale, is it not for sale? It's both commercial and residential. I think the most important part is it gives latitude to the manager. It is not intended to be a hammer, but a carrot. And so, as long as a property owner is working and communicating with the village, there would be no penalty.
And I believe, I asked this before, but just to refresh my memory.
Sure.
I don't think, there's not been any type of study before this of how many vacant buildings we have in town?
No, getting that information is not easy. This is in part to gather that information.
This is how we gather that information?
Exactly, yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
So I'll have it on the agenda, as you can see from this draft, there are several blanks that deal with the amount of a fine or whatever. So you have latitude on that. If the council's interested in moving forward, that's fine. If you're not, obviously we'll continue with code enforcement as we do it now. So it's really up to you. Alright?
I do have two questions.
Sure.
So, one point oh-six exemptions. It says a building under active construction renovation and having a valid building permit shall be exempt from registration until the expiration of the longest-running currently active building permit. So, active construction?
Mm-hmm, for building permit. Normally a building permit's good for one year.
So... So I can, I have a vacant building. I go get a building permit. I have it active for one year, I don't have to register it. But does, okay, so, but I have to be doing construction in that building. I have to be getting inspections. I have to be doing work in that building because other, I feel like there's just a loophole right there.
There can be. I think the point is by contacting us to make us aware that you own this building and it's under renovation or construction, that's a step that we don't have now. So they haven't actually filed for the registration, but they have communicated with the village. I would expect that we would do periodic inspections at their convenience, especially if all the renovations are interior, if they're not visible from the exterior. When they do want to add anything, I mean, I think it gives us enough broad authority to make progress, but again, it's not, it's not intended to be punitive. It's more of an information gathering process. Now, if you don't communicate, if you don't work with the village after a period of time, there is the ability for a fine. But it's not, it starts out reasonably small and will only grow over time. But the point is to try to prevent from getting to where we are on multiple buildings that have been vacant for years and years and years and nothing's happened.
So I guess my, my, my concern with the exemptions, which I agree that if it's, if there's a valid, if they go and they get plans drawn and they get a permit and they're actively doing the construction, that's not a problem. It's, they go and they get plans drawn and they go and get a permit and then that's the end of it. And then they've got a year, right? So now I've got this building vacant because I found, I've got a year, so I'm just going to sit here with this vacant building for a year and not have to pay.
I want to make sure I'm clear, your concern is the proposed legislation is too lax? It gives them too much latitude?
I think there's just-
If you choose to tighten it, we can. I'm trying to find that, I'm trying to find-
Have a medium.
Well, I'm trying to find what the council, what the council's interested in providing as a tool to gather that information in our community. So not be too strict, be reasonable. But again, we're trying to prevent situations that we have now. We have multiple buildings that have been vacant for a very long time, to the point some of them are falling down and deal with them before they start falling down.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I think that that's kind of what I see, it's like I've seen building permits and windows.
For years.
For years, and that's where, like, we, it needs to be in active construction, meaning you're getting your inspections done and it's highly, and that can be based on a lot, a number of things. But I think that, like, in the, like, maybe the exceptions need to be a little bit deeper defined because there's also, like, if a building is for sale, that was my other one. Unless, so, I own a, I, I own a buil-, let's pretend I own a building. I'm trying to think, I own a building and it's vacant and I don't want to fix it and I don't want to run it out. So I go and I get a permit, so I've got a year, I've bought myself a year. And then my next, my next thing is a building that is for sale, enlisted with a licensed state of Ohio Realtor. So I'm going to, the end of twenty twenty-five, I go and I get a building permit. Twenty twenty-six comes up, I call a Realtor, I have them list it for me for ten million dollars and it's worth two hundred thousand. So, like, do we put any language in there for, like, fair market value?
I would suggest that council can make it as strict or as lax to begin with as you see fit. You need to determine where that line is, where it's appropriate in terms of the village's involvement or not.
You can make the, where they list it for sale, that it can't go back past a twelve-month period. Like, they're not exempt for over twelve months. Like, you can't list it every year just to get out of paying it. You can make that in here and put that as a requirement. Also with the, the under-active construction, if you guys want to make sure that they are doing construction or making progress on the building, you can make that requirement in here and say, you know, they're required to provide proof of, you know, improvements to the property in the active construction every three months, every four months, you know, that sort of thing. So you guys can work with this and put in what you want.
Alright.
I might be the only one that feels that way, I just, because those are just questions I had.
What I would suggest, if there's enough level of interest to at least pass it on the first reading, because then you can make adjustments from there going forward and then decide if a majority of you are interested in finalizing it or not.
Alright, I like that. I'm in favor of it.
I know that Dawn had raised some serious concerns about it and was not in favor. And I'll be honest, I'm about fifty-fifty on it. Seems like, I can't find it now, it seems like there was a provision in the last one I read about if the building was not being used in accordance with its zoning.
So if you've got an industrially-zoned property that you're using as a storage building.
Right. And so, my concern with that is if it's otherwise maintained and kept and isn't vacant because it's being stored or used, then it, to me, it doesn't meet the intent or the spirit of the vacant building, you know.
Again, those are decisions that you can make in the legislation if, if you wish it.
That would be one of the-
The flip side, I would argue, is we have limited industrial property and do you really want to see someone use their industrial building as their personal closet? And do you really want to see someone use their industrial building as their personal closet? And is that in the best interest of the village?
Which is why I'm stuck in the middle. I under, I understand that argument and, and I've even kind of made it sorted in discussions around the house, but I mean-
I want to make it very clear, whatever the council decides is fine. I'm simply bringing it to your attention as an option if you wish to use that tool moving forward in our code enforcement. That's all. Whatever you decide, I, makes sense to me. Alright?
Uh, next is high grass insert into water bills.
Uh, yes. Hopefully you have an example in your packet that shows what we listed on the bills that just went out. And then also what we're posting on the website. In terms of the language.
I don't see anything.
Come on. My apologies. Here's, I will pass this around. You'll pass that down, please?
Was it the water bill and website you said?
Correct. This would be the implementation of the step of changing the way we notify violators for tall grass. And obviously we need to notify everyone. We put it in newspapers, it's going to be on the website, on our Facebook page. It's going into each of the utility bills. And then going forward, there'll be one notification I left on the door. And then we'll mow it and it will go on their taxes if they haven't paid it.
I might add, once we post all these in the different places, we can send a never bridge out to remind folks to read about this. Not specifically what the ordinance is, but we can send a never bridge to remind them to read the water bills and then, uh, check the website.
I like that.
I, I think it's very important for the community to understand the village really doesn't want to mow their yard. We really don't. My staff doesn't want to. It's not what our people are paid to do. But we will, if we must, to bring the property into compliance.
Looks good to me.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah. Just hopefully, everyone reads their water bill.
You have high hopes and I agree, but, um, I realistically understand that won't happen.
Well, maybe they'll read the website or, or Facebook page. That'll, that would be good as well. But we're, I like it because we're doing our due diligence to get it out. So-
And then some.
Yes, and then some. That's good. Very good.
Alright, next is the sidewalk incentive program.
Yeah, and we've discussed in some previous meetings, there's multiple ways that we could incentivize. Um, I, I will let you know that we're doing actually an assessment of our sidewalks, uh, using our intern this summer. One of the projects he's working on is to use a rating system that's similar to what we use on the streets, which gives the section of sidewalk a numeric rating and take a picture and, and describe what the deficiency is. And this will allow us to simply say exactly what percentage, percentage of sidewalks need repair and what the repair is, whether it's uneven or broken or whatever the issue is. So, um, we've talked about in the past whether the village would set aside a, a, an amount of funds. Uh, as, as small as $10,000, as much as $100,000, I've seen. Uh, and then take applications, first come, first served. It's on a reimbursable basis. Um, there's no, there's no judging this one better or more important than that one. As they come in, until the money's gone, they have to complete the work, uh, with, and have it inspected. And if it meets all of our requirements, they can be reimbursed up to 50% of the cost. I've seen it 10%, 20%. You don't get as much, uh, interest if it's that small amount. Uh, 50%, normally it'll wipe out whatever money you set aside. So the real question is how high of a priority does the council set on getting residents to start fixing some of the deficient sidewalk or installing new sidewalk where there is none currently? Obviously that's going to be more expensive. Uh, and I've seen that also at 50%. Maybe you only do 25% if it's a repair. But it's really up to you if you're interested in doing that. Now would be the time if we're going to get any sidewalks fixed before the end of the year and/or if you're interested in building into this year's budget for next year. Uh, so that we would start encouraging the residents to start taking a look and fixing their sidewalks.
Yeah, like I've said in the past, I think we should target areas that are the, you know, the worst or that need it the most. And then that way we can concentrate the money into, you know, because like corner lots are going to be a lot more expensive than, you know?
They are. It can be. Tell me what parameters you want. I'll draft a program and give it to your review. And it's just a question of how much and when you want to begin to try to implement it.
Alright.
So suggestions like that, yes, counsel?
So there's no money at all at this point set aside in this year's budget for this incentive program? There's nothing that's-
There, there is, it was not budgeted specifically for that. That's not to say we couldn't find some, I believe, uh, if you want to try to do some before the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, but it definitely needs to be on our budget.
On our agenda for the next year.
Right. What I'm trying to give you is enough information and time that you consider it before we start working on for the budget. If you decide it's a project for next year, next construction season, not this construction season.
Do we know of any other communities in Miami County, Tip City, Troy, Pickwa, Covington have done an incentive program like this?
I, I, my understanding is some of them have forced the residents to make fixes, but not offered an incentive. Uh, my experience with those is in other states.
Earlier in the state office, Hillier has a really, uh, big example. It's called the state sidewalk program. Uh, they've been setting up, and, and, uh, I think a lot of what Justin's writing is stuck in their language and not, but not other sort of language. So I have a, just a word for that is Hillier, Ohio.
Thank you, yeah.
If we could maybe get a copy of that to at least have us, have a start, something to look at, that would be, that'd be terrific.
Since that's the gentleman doing the assessment program, I'll add that to, uh, he'll, he'll gather that information and-
That'd be wonderful.
Any other questions on, on a sidewalk program?
Can we look into like where it goes on your property tax bill? I can't think of that word.
It's an assessment.
The assessment, yes. Can we look into that as an option?
You mean just putting it directly on their taxes?
If that's not, like-
That's always an option.
It's always an option, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, you, you, you can always do that if you, if you want to. I believe you have the ability to hammer to the point, any sidewalk that doesn't meet your minimum requirements, they can be forced to fix it by a certain time, or you go in and fix it and then put it on their taxes.
Yeah, but I think what she's asking is make it an option for people that just want to repair it. But maybe don't have the cash to do it, to put it on there. Sort of like the curbs, right? There was like a three-year, so it is an option even if the city isn't demanding it.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Or forcing residents to do it. Okay.
And, and the same piece, uh, I didn't mention it specifically, but get a contractor to get you a very favorable price because he's going to do a minimum of so many feet of, of sidewalk somewhere. So in theory, that's going to be a better price than the, the individual would get if they went out to hire them. So we, the village does everything it can to facilitate getting the most competitive price and making it as easy for the resident to comply and participate.
Cool, sounds good.
Alright?
Thank you.
Uh, next is the stillwater crossings update.
Mr. Kaufman, Mr. Morris, I believe there's multiple parts to the update. I believe, we're going to start with the streetlight update. Is that correct?
Happy, happy to start with streetlights.
Whatever, whatever you prefer, Mr. Kauf, uh, Morris.
Do you have in your packets some information on streetlights?
Yes, yes.
So I know that streetlights is a topic that we have talked about for a long time. And I have a suggestion or a recommendation to share with you tonight and some information on, you know, if you're in favor of this or leaning towards this, how we might move forward. When this, uh, conversation initially came up, what we did is we reached out to Miami Valley Lighting, which is a subsidiary of AES, and they do the installs. And what had been suggested at the time was that we as the developer would cover the cost of the install. The village would own the lights, would take care of the electric bills. Uh, one of the challenges that I foresee with that, even if it had been done a while ago, is the cost to bore through the rock. You know, place the streetlight and, and bore through the rock because the original plan had just a couple of electric meters. And so, uh, that is compounded now by the fact that we have a lot of homeowners. So when I had worked with Jeff and presented, I mean, I wasn't here personally, but Jeff shared with you a plan with some locations and council, I believe, added some lights in cul-de-sacs. Those were located in areas where the goal was to already have electric very close. But even that would require installation in the, you know, the area between the curb and the sidewalk, going under the sidewalk to the electric pedestal. And, you know, not that it would be huge, but it would be some disturbance to a homeowner's yard. And then trying to get an electric meter there. What that would also mean is that the village would have 19 electric meters and 19 electric bills. If that's how we were going to do it, alternatively, we were back to boring under driveways and everywhere else to try and get those in. So I reached out to one of the suppliers that we have used for some other streetlights. I said, hey, what do we look like as far as solar? Has that come along any further? And so that's what we have here as an example. You can see that this on the back has the solar panel. And so this would be mounted for that configuration. So it collects the light for the solar energy during the day. And then it has multiple settings. The lights are-
We were testing it out earlier. It's fairly bright.
Whoa.
With all the lights on in here. So, so this is a, a suggestion. The benefit to this is obviously you wouldn't have the electric bills. Um, our proposal is still that we would provide the light, the pole, and the installation. Um, the installation of this would be done with a piece of equipment that backs up to the curb, drills down, and then a kind of a spiral flooded, uh, base would go down either into the rock or the soil. And then the pole would mount on top of that and ultimately the light fixture. And from a, just a logistical standpoint, um, the same remote could control all of them. They have multiple settings, which you can see in here. So eight hours of charge time provides 15 hours of light. But that can be done with motion sensors. It can be done, you know, at 100% for a certain amount of time. And then as you get later on in the night, reduce its brightness to 25% of its intensity. And so, you know, that's, that's something that I guess we'd like for you to consider. These lights are more expensive. I'm going to say significantly more expensive. But the installation is enough less that it ends up being about a wash on what we were going to provide. But with that, I'll open it up to questions on, on lights.
As far as the, the light output, it's going to be similar or the same as a regular light that would be?
Yes, and what you see, if you look on the third page of your handout, there's a couple of different models. You can see that this is the 2030, that this is the 30 watt. There is a, there is a larger brighter one, but this is what was recommended. And yes, it would provide similar output to other streetlights. Just about everything is LED today anyway.
Have you utilized these in any other, um, communities or have you seen them in?
We have not. I reached out to the supplier and waiting to hear back if there are any communities that he could point us to kind of between here in Columbus or here in Cincinnati that we might take a look at.
Yeah, that'd be great. Because I'd like to see what the aesthetics of that looks like to, you know, for the, for the subdivision and how that would be set up.
For sure. Uh, one of the good things about this was this is something that is in stock. And so they have them, because I remember the other thing was, hey, if we pulled the trigger on something with Miami Valley Lighting, it was going to be six months, eight month lead time. This is something that we could, you know, have in 30 days and have installed before the end of the summer.
If I may update, uh, as you recall, on the trail project that we're still working on for 571. ODOT, uh, I've learned, will not allow me to put the infrastructure for lighting, which was not included in the original project. We maxed out the grant, paid for the trail itself. And I had planned to use a similar approach, as I had in the past, where I put in the infrastructure for lighting. And I should say, most trails, in my experience, don't have lighting. But because this one is on a state highway, I think for a safety standpoint, it should. So I had approached ODOT to pay for the design to include the infrastructure for lighting, even though I didn't have the funds at this time, with the idea being, once they're putting it in the ground, I could come back in a couple of years when we can afford it to actually put the lighting in. I was told ODOT will not allow that. It's either everything or nothing. So that made me start looking at alternatives, which solar was an option. It was not, not the, the, uh, infrastructure required, the wiring or anything else to do that. So it would be much easier to retrofit or include solar lighting uh, for that portion of the trail than it would be. So, uh, I, I don't know if in fact this ends up being the direction we choose to go. But if it does, uh, it may be an advantage that we can, uh, purchase the, a larger number of them to supply both the project and the trail project. And, or if we can't, that we can still put in lighting a year or two from now after the trail is complete, uh, when we can find the funding to help pay for it.
My one concern looking at this is, um, there's a limited three-year warranty on the battery. And there's a five-year warranty on the lighting unit. So I'm just a bit concerned with that. So the longevity of these lights compared to what we have with the, with the current, streetlights that are hooked to electric?
So I think that any LED, even if it was hooked to electric, would have the same potential with the, you know, with the lighting unit. So sometimes those panels go bad and you've seen them probably in parking lots where the lights are flickering or some places. That's, you know, that's a possibility. Uh, when I did talk to the supplier for this, they said that, you know, the parts are, of the Sonaray products, Sonaray is investing a lot of their effort into this particular, they call it the all-in-one. So they, they have some other products, but it's kind of like, hey, there's a light and then there's a, a solar panel that mounts on top of the light. And they, two parts in one, this is all one. So I did ask that specific question because if I'm the village and now it's great, I've got these lights in, but they're more costly to replace, what does that look like? They said that the, the battery is easily replaceable. The black box you see on the bottom, and there's four screws on each side that comes off, that's where the battery is. That fixture is about $1,900. The pole was about $800. The fixtures we were looking at before through Miami Valley were in the $500 to $600 range. Now, part of that was because the village had a connection with Miami Valley and got some better pricing. But I didn't ask that question.
Okay. So ultimately then, at some point, the batteries on those would have to be replaced?
Correct.
Okay. But we don't know what the cost of the batteries are.
I could ask that question, certainly.
That'd be great.
You'd have to weigh the cost of the electric bills we're not paying versus the cost to replace that battery.
Yeah.
Because I would assume that once these are installed down the road, when the battery goes, that's on us.
Yes. Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
One other thing, and I, Jeff and I had talked about this, but my, on my request, regardless of the route that we go, whatever is ultimately decided, uh, and I'm happy to draft it, but I was going to request that the village send out a notice of some sort- but I was going to request that the village send out a notice of some sort to the residents who were going to have a streetlight installed, you know, in front of their home, just so that they were aware. Um, and, you know, we could set kind of timeframe for that, but just so people would know. The other thing in talking with Ryan Holmes, it was suggested that, um, if we put up the streetlights on the phases that aren't built yet, that might not be the best idea just because of the number of trucks and equipment that goes into delivering everything and constructing a home. But we could put that base that screws into the ground that's kind of flush. They, they would have the list of locations. So if they were selling a home, they would know, hey, you're going to have a, a streetlight and that can be mounted. Yeah, we could order those and keep them and just install them as, as they came ready.
So it's solar.
Yes.
In more Ohio.
Yes.
And it gets really not sunny for several months. So could we address that?
Sure. I think, uh, maybe like a lot of you, I'm, I'm, my first thought with solar is years ago when you got those little things that stuck in the landscape bed out in front of your house and it was like, it was as bright as a dim flashlight. You know, it's like, it's been sunny for eight hours today and I can't see anything extra with that. Um, these have come a long way. So they are still getting charged even if it's an overcast day. Now, if there's a solar eclipse or something else, obviously they're, they're not getting their, their energy then. Um, but it, it's eight hours to get 15 hours. So even if you've got a, a rainstorm or kind of a cloudy day, that period of time is longer than the eight hours that it needs to charge. And so unless we just have a week of really kind of crazy weather, what I was told by the supplier was that that's typically not an issue. And it also has the ability to run at a kind of a lower brightness, I think, if the battery is low.
Okay.
Any other questions on streetlights before I move on? Um, Andy Brossard is here tonight. I know he's going to give us an update. Let me share with you briefly, um, just some, some different things relative to the development. Um, if you had driven by, you know, any time here recently, uh, you know, we probably should have received one of those call grass notifications. Uh, the company that we were using to keep the grass down in the vacant lots declined this year to continue. So we found another one and that's on for by the end of this week. So just as a kind of a side note, we want to be a big neighbor there. That should be taken care of by the end of this week. Um, as far as development, let's start on the south side, just kind of an update. I think everybody is aware that Randall Residence is open and operating. Um, both the main building and then the villas are now coming online. Um, I had an update call with them today. The, uh, reception for the, uh, main building has been great, maybe even better than what they expected, a little slower than what they had expected on some of the villas, but they do have an open house, uh, this Friday. Overall, the picture is good. They're, you know, moving new people in frequently, um, you know, just bringing all of their services online and that seems to be going well.
What time is the, uh, open house Friday with the cottages?
It is, it's daytime hours rather than evening hours. I can get that and send it over to you.
Okay. That'd be great. I'd like to check that out.
Yeah. Um, so other things that we, that we are working on, um, you know, we talk about some of these commercial projects, both the retail building, uh, the convenience store that is scheduled for the corner. Um, I would love nothing more than to come in and say, hey, here's, here's when the ribbon cutting is or here's when the, uh, the groundbreaking is. Uh, and I'm also aware that I've been in before and shared updates of things we were targeting and those dates get moved down the road. Uh, one thing is Andy gets into what he's going to share, you know, we're still invested. We, Bron and I are paying the increased cost for those commercial properties. You know, the TIF and NCA charges are being levied, even though we don't have anything there. So we're pushing to get those things done. Um, on the commercial front, um, I do have a couple of good news things to share. Um, we do have a signed letter of intent with Buckeye Burger. Uh, we spoke with Scott Wicklow to confirm that we were allowed to share that tonight. Uh, and then we are also working on, um, in that same building, either a Domino's Pizza, uh, franchisee who we've been working with or, uh, one of the two Cincinnati Chili parlors. Uh, we know which one Jeff would prefer. We're working both with, uh, Skyline and Gold Star, uh, on that. And we've had conversations. One of the things that we did in that retail space was we have divided that building, which was originally, uh, designed to be about 15,000 square feet. We have broken that into a couple of buildings. The idea being that any type of financing will require a certain percentage completion before they're ready to go. So, uh, where we're at is with the smaller of the two buildings, we have the design. Um, we're waiting on either Domino's or one of the Chili locations to sign their letter of intent. We'll take that to the bank, finalize the financing and then be ready to break ground. So certainly as those things come online, we will share that with you. We're excited about it. Um, you know, not only for the village, but for us to get, to get that going. On the convenience store, all of that is still as we have planned. Uh, one of the things that we faced was as we went through the financing process, um, as you know, anybody who gets gas or goes to buy groceries know the costs have gone up. And so it was a, you know, proof for amount X. And as we went to the bank, they said, okay, we want to confirm that all these things are as, you know, you forecasted. And so we're going through the process of updating bids, finalizing those plans because they want to have everything in line as they would before, uh, that moves forward. But that is still, you know, high on our list.
So, uh, a question for you with that. Since that gas station marketplace, car wash was originally going to have a couple of fast food places in it, since Buckeye Burger, Domino's, Skyline, Gold Star are looking at coming into that retail area, are you still envisioning that there would be some best or, or not? Because then there would be maybe too much there.
Right. Um, here's what I will tell you, and this has just kind of been internal. It hasn't been finalized yet. Um, originally there was going to be a Taco John's and then kind of that was connected to the C store. And then inside the C store was, uh, Chester's Chicken, you know? And I think that Chester's Chicken is still, um, the, the plan that we have. We have been reevaluating the Taco John's simply because of not wanting to compete with, um, the tacos that just opened here on the, at the corner. So.
They closed.
Oh. Well, okay. That must've been just recently.
It was.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry to hear that, but, um, that will, I guess, weigh into the factor. But yes, there was still, uh, some plans to look at it, you know? Um, so yes, still something, but looking more selectively at what would be, uh, you know, complimentary rather than straight competition.
Okay. Are you thinking that there's a possibility with the corner marketplace, gas station, car wash to break ground before the end of the year or, uh, you don't know?
Well, I'm going to say our goal is before the end of the year.
Okay.
With what we're, with the track that we're running.
Okay. And then what about the, uh, health services? Is there?
Uh, for Mayor Health, uh, it's been a while since we've had an update from them, but their, um, their start point I think was.
I'm sorry. I'm meeting with Kevin Hart on our Friday for my next update from them.
Excellent.
Okay. Very good. Because I know the original plan was once the Randall Residence and the cottages were established.
Well, it was, it was a number of rooftops, um, which were, were rapidly approaching. Um, and then the other thing I, I know just had to do with Doc Ginn and where he was at and his decision. Um, because I don't think they wanted to compete and I don't know if he was at the tail end, if he wanted to move. Um, but I'm sure Jeff will have that update after the conversation on Friday.
Okay. Sounds good.
Um, may come back up and share a few things north side, but I'd like to turn it over to Andy first to kind of give us some updates. Um, and Jeff, I don't know if you want to share any of the, kind of the precursor to this?
Um, sure. Um, as we've heard on more than one occasion, um, how the South Side project is financed, uh, I think it's helpful to get updates on exactly where we are compared to what the projections were at some point in the past. I believe Mr. Broser is going to cover some of that and then some of the specifics as we're working with other entities that are affected by the project, such as the studios and or the end of the sport.
And Jeff, as I, I may have just asked, I think we talked about doing that under number 14 here, some of that.
Yes, yes. Uh, we, you can cover whatever, yes, some of that will be under 14, some of that that is not appropriate. Yeah. Whatever you want to give at this point, then the rest will do in executive session.
And so I guess let me just, let me just share relative to the north side where we're at. Um, we have the design completed. So, uh, our first phase, construction drawings have been in, submitted to the village. Uh, we have those bid out. Um, and so we are just now working through, uh, the, the bond and TIF, you know, process to get that financing in place. Uh, the goal for that as well would be groundbreaking before the end of the year. So I know Andy will get into a couple more of the specifics here and all. Any other questions as far as updates going around?
All right. Um, we will turn it over to Mr. Broser for this part of it. Do it, you want to do it all?
Yes, that's right, Mr. Bro.
Okay.
We'll do it all in executive.
All right. I believe that concludes everything on the, uh, the agenda for tonight. Uh, let's see.
We're going into regular session.
Yep. Are there any motions to go into regular session?
What motion? We go into regular session?
Second. Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Dorman, Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Metz, Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Fogel?
Yes.
Mayor Hearst?
Yes. All right. Uh, next on the agenda is CM dash 24 dash 26, Ms. Proch?
Um, it's an ordinance amending section 30.03, meeting place and time of the Code of Ordinances for the municipality of Westonhope, Ohio.
Thank you. Does council have any questions or comments? All right. I'll open the floor for a motion to approve.
Make a motion. We accept ordinance CM dash 24 dash 26.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorman, Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Metz, Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Fogel?
Yes.
Mayor Hearst?
Yes. Good idea. All right. So, uh, with this passing, the next regular meeting, which will be, uh, in June, will start at 6:30 instead of the normal 7:30. Just to make sure that everyone knows. That way.
And all meetings going forward will start at 6:30.
And all meetings going forward. Yes, correct. Thank you. All right. Uh, next is, are there any motions?
Well, if I can do one thing before you read that, um, we all know that a council member resigned at the last meeting.
Oh, yes.
Council does have to, um, just make a motion and vote that, uh, just to make sure that that seat is vacant and to open that seat for anybody who would be interested in.
All right. So we just need to open the seat or?
Yeah, you just need to make a motion to designate that the seat is vacant and that you will be accepting any.
I, I make a motion that the seat is vacant and we will accept applications?
Letters of interest.
Letters of interest for someone to fill the seats.
And that's 10 days that that stays open? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct, but I will have to check.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. But that'll be publicized on our website and all that stuff. Okay.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, roll call.
Mr. Dorman, Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Metz, Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Fogel?
Yes.
Mayor Hearst?
Yes. Next is the, uh, yeah, I think so.
All right. Mayor, I move that council enters into a brief executive session, session pursuant to section 4.12 B5C, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body.
A second.
Roll call.
Sorry. Mr. Dorman, Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Metz, Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Fogel?
Yes.
Mayor Hearst?
Yes. All right. We'll, uh, move into executive session. Uh, there'll be no further business when we come back from executive session, but everyone is, uh, welcome to stay. Thank you.